I'd like to bring our regular township meeting to order, December 12th, 2013. I'd like to salute the flag and a moment of silence, please.
To the flag, every United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. First on our agenda is first reading of ordinance 2013-33, vacating an easement between blocks 838, lot 10, and block 841, lot 1.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, vacating all the right title and interest of the Township of Lacy in a drainage easement between block 838, lot 10, and block 841, lot 1. This is on Laurel Boulevard. This gentleman was affected by Hurricane Sandy, and due to his rebuild, he needs to have the easement vacated. I had Mr. Parker go out and take a look at it. It is not an active drainage easement with a pipe in it. We don't see any purpose for retaining it, so we are vacating the easement. This is an easement that the gentleman basically owns the property, is paying taxes on it, so we're just vacating our right to be on there, so there is no charge for the property because he already does own it and has to maintain it.
Motion.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Yes.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mayor Most.
Yes. First reading of ordinance 2013-34, adopting a redevelopment plan for block 1837, lots 8.02 and 9.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, adopting a redevelopment plan on block 1837, lots 8.02 and lot 9. This is the former nursing home site that is located here off of Municipal Lane. We've been working on this since July with regards to a redevelopment plan on that site. The Department of Community Affairs in the state of New Jersey has approved the site to be considered a redevelopment plan. Attached to your ordinance is the plan that has been developed by our planner, Mr. Magsuga, and this is part of the approval process, that it went to the planning board for adhering this pla- a couple of months ago, and then this past evening, and now we need to adopt an ordinance and have it on our books.
Motion.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Yes, I want our people, our township residents out there to know what's going on. So, this is a redevelopment for that site.
Correct.
There will be 100 units.
There'll be 70 units built on that site of apartment-style houses?
Seventy units, okay. And then could we please tell them how big these units will be?
They'll vary between one and three bedrooms, but at this time, it's still in the preliminary stages with regards to the developer that we're working with. But there will be rental units for affordable housing, and it will be managed by a development company, not managed by the town.
And this is a plan to meet our COA requirements, so we've been working on this for years, so we want to try to make this as reasonable as possible for the residents and meet the commitments that the state put forth as well.
It says 100, it will be construction of 100 family rental units.
I think it was only 70 planned.
It's only 70.
Seventy, yes.
Yeah, so there should be a correction of.
Yeah, if you look at the map, Mr. Delacruz, the map shows the overall site itself when we bought the nursing home.
Yes, oh, I saw it.
It carries from the nursing home site in the back all the way up to Lacy Road. The ability would be there for them to come back later on and develop another 30 units on the front, if it shows to do so, and if the governing body in place at that time chooses to do so as well. But the reality is, at this point in time, the decision we had made was to hold on to the stuff up on Lacy Road because it's going to have a lot more value to us to sell it off to a different type of use, and we wouldn't want housing that close to Lacy Road. So, it identifies 100, but it's only going to be 70 units in the space.
Yes, okay. I wanted them to know so they know what's going on that we're talking about. Thank you.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Most.
Yes. We have second reading of ordinance 2013-29, amending a bond ordinance 2013-16.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, amending in part ordinance number 2013-16, adopted on July 24th, 2013, providing for various capital improvements and the acquisition of various capital equipment in order to expand the scope of improvements to include additional engineering studies authorized in and by the Township of Lacy. This is not increasing the ordinance, this is just reallocating part of the money for the Deerhead Lake study to also include engineering costs for the Bayside Beach, Hanses Pond, Warden's Oyster Pond, and Stouts Creek for the engineering and surveys and permitting for that.
Motion.
Move it.
Oh, I'm sorry, second reading. I open it up to the public for public comment. Seeing no public comment, motion to close the floor.
Move it.
Second. Motion on ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Most.
Yes. Second reading on ordinance 2013-30, authorizing sale of block 183, lot 5, to the adjoining property owners.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing sale block 183, lot 5, on the municipal tax map to Richard Medwin and Tracy Medwin, and Philip Camerata and Amelia Camerata, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 48:12-13B and NJSA 48:12-13.2. This is a non-conforming lot off of Beach Boulevard. It's being sold to the adjoining property owners, splitting it. $10,000 is total, each one is paying $5,000.
Being a second reading, I open it up the floor to public comment. Seeing no public comment, motion to close the floor.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Motion on ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Most.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2013-31, setting salaries for the non-bargaining union employees.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, in order to the Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, affixing and determining salaries, wages, and compensation to the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is a salary increases for the year 2013 to 2014 for the non-union employees. It would be department heads and assistant department heads and hourly staff on here. This is a 2% average.
Being a second reading, I open the floor to public comment. Seeing no public comment, motion to close the floor.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Motion on ordinance? Second.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
I'm really torn with this. Because you see, I work very well with the department heads, and I do appreciate all their hard work and appreciate the professionalism. But I get a lot of calls and a lot of people whom I meet where I go in Shoprite or Post Office, people who know that this is second reading tonight, who have expressed saying that they don't favor the races. So, it's not that I love the department heads less, but it's that I love Lacy more, and I want to listen and express the feelings of my bosses. And who are my bosses? It's the people who elected me into office. And so, because of them, I vote no.
Mayor, if I could, I apologize, I have to abstain on this, I have a conference amendment.
That's fine.
Want to go for the rest of the roll call?
Okay, so, Mr. Sharkey?
I understand Mrs. Delacruz's concerns, and I understand absolutely where she's coming from, and I respect her opinion. I'm, how we're going to disagree, I'm just going to vote yes on this.
And Mayor Most?
Yes. On the basis that, you know, our managers, we give our unions, I figure a fair raise as well as our managers deserve the same, and they're not lavish raises, and they sacrificed years ago, and, you know, it's time to take care of them as well. I know that we're always in tough times, but 2% to me isn't excessive, so I vote yes. Okay, second reading of ordinance 2013-32, setting salaries for the Teamster Local 97 bargaining unit.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, in order to the Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, affixing and determining salaries, wages, and compensation to the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is after several negotiations and perk mediation, the final settlement for the years 2013, 14, and 15 is as follows. For the year 2013, 2% or 1,500, whichever is greater. For the year 2014, 2% or 1,100, whichever is greater. And for the year 2015, 2% or 1,100, whichever is greater.
Being a second reading, I open the floor to public comment. Seeing no public comment, motion to close the floor.
Move it.
Second.
Motion on ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Being that this is a contractual matter, yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Most.
Yes. Resolution 2013-307, appointing a part-time senior purchasing agent.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, provisionally appointing Allison Price to the part-time position of senior purchasing assistant for the Township of Lacy within the police department. This is a 19, no more than a 19-hour-per-week job, and this is to assist with the purchasing duties of the police department.
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Yes.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mayor Most.
Yes. Resolution 2013-309, making various provisional promotions within the Public Works Department.
No, don't we have to do another one first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Resolution 2013-308, making various non-competitive promotions in the Public Works Department.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, making various non-competitive promotions in the Department of Public Works. The following individuals are being promoted. Dave Brown to building maintenance worker, Fred Catition to truck driver, Anthony Morelli to truck driver, and Chris Guarisi to truck driver. These promotions are effective December 16th, 2013, and they're in accordance of salaries in accordance with the Teamster's Local 97 bargaining unit.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dyk- Dyk- Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Most.
Yes. Casey, you want to step up to the microphone and have your workers come up here?
You want to do the next one and then we'll.
Yeah, that's fine. Resolution 2013-309, making various provisional promotions within the Public Works Department.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing various provisional promotions in the Department of Public Works for the Township of Lacy pending promotional procedures by the Civil Service Commission. The following promotions are being made. Dennis Barcalow to heavy equipment operator B, Ray Bradmore to heavy equipment operator B, William Rule to heavy equipment operator B, Charles Fino to maintenance repairer B, Nick- Nicholas Kalus to motor broom driver, John Hudson to supervisor of public works.
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Yes.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mayor Most.
Yes.
Mayor, I just, I'd like to thank you and the township committee. I know it's been a long time, you know, because of the economic conditions that we've all experienced over the last several years. There's been quite a dry spell in the Public Works Department as far as promotions are concerned, even though we were losing people at a fairly rapid rate for the last five, six years. We haven't been making any promotions or replacing those titles as they, as they left. This year, I did ask for these promotions. We talked about that during the budget process, and, you know, it's nice to see that, you know, it's finally come to fruition. Each member here has been performing those duties day in, day out for quite some time now, and I can tell you that they're all well-deserving. They're very proficient at their jobs, at their respective jobs, based on their titles, and I think it's, it's going to be a nice improvement for the department, as well as for each individual that's receiving this promotion tonight. So, again, I thank you very much for your support, and I think it's a great thing for our department today and going forward.
It's a great team you have, and I want to thank you, but I'd like you to move on with, talk a little bit about the Heebu Park. I stopped by the park and.
Oh, you got put on the spot.
I, I, I want you to talk about how many, as far as what work was done in-house and what work was contracted, and also thank the Rotary for their generous donation for the playgrounds. And you guys always step up to the plate, and you do find work, and it's a, it's a, I'm proud of the team that's back there, I'm proud of Casey, and you guys really own it. And it's nice when you have that kind of passion when you come to work and you really care about the town. And I see we have a couple firemen here too, called during the day, which is really a nice thing that happens too, because they look out for our community as well, and it's kind of a nice, nice partnership we have there, so.
Absolutely, I mean, we pride ourselves in, in doing a lot of our work in-house. We've been doing that for the last, you know, 22 years, 23 years, and, you know, we continue to do that. Now, Heebu Park is just another example of utilizing, you know, the many towns that we have back there, saving a great deal of money for the community, and I think we put out a, you know, a quality product. You know, to identify any individual in that effort, you know, Heebu Park being the latest project is probably a little unfair, so I would say that, you know, it's definitely a group effort from everybody back there. There's 10 individuals sitting here right now, so that's a third of our workforce, and each and every one of these gentlemen here, including the ones that aren't here tonight, definitely take an active role. Hopefully, in the spring, say nay, we'll have a nice ribbon cutting for Heebu Park, and I think it gave Heebu Park a nice shot in the arm, and it's going to be nice to see people coming back to that park, because I think people were actually going away from it because of its age, and, but now, you know, with the new equipment and new soccer field and the new facilities.
Tennis court, basketball court?
Yep, tennis court, basketball court. Top lot is in, and again, we'll have a nice ribbon cutting in the spring, the landscaping and soccer field be ready to play in June, so it's, it's a nice thing.
And again, we appreciate your dedication, and if you want to shake each committee person's hand along the way, I think that would be.
Why don't we just congratulate them? If, if I could just, you know, we've had a couple rough years, you guys, you know, know that, everyone pretty much knows that, but you stuck with us all the way, and we truly appreciate everything you did over the years. You're, you're very, very deserving of these positions, and like Casey said, you, most of you have been working in different areas where you didn't have to work, and it's, it's been a long time getting to this point, but you never missed a beat and never put anything on the back burner that would affect the residents of this town, so whether it be Superstorm Sandy or, you know, whatever we went through, you were always there. And snow last Sunday, you know, or sand or whatever day it was, you were always there.
Sunday.
So, you know, we truly congratulate you and appreciate everything you guys did. Seriously, and Casey, same goes to you.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Any further comments?
Yes, I would like to congratulate, it's of you and, and everyone in your department. I want to say thanks, Casey, and also to you for all you do for our township. You're great, and, and decoration outside is so pretty too, thank you. And so, I wish you well and your families, and congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll say something. Lacy Township is held up amongst all, against all the townships. Everyone who comes here comments what a great township we have and how beautiful it is. Plus you guys, and we've had our ups and downs, hopefully times have turned a corner, and I want to thank you all. Long time coming, we know that, and glad we can do it for you, and glad we can do it for Casey, and keep up the good work. Thanks.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Mayor? If I could really quick, I know you guys all go above and beyond quite often. One of the best compliments I always get is about our Public Works Department, whether it's in reference to snow removal, the fantastic guy, job you guys have done on the decorations, street repair, whatever it comes down to, your department is always considered excellent by the residents. And I know I've, I've reached out to you guys several times, even before I was on the committee, whether it was helping getting Gilly Park ready for one of my fundraisers or a dunk tank or a baseball game, you guys have always been there above and beyond, so thank you for all your hard work.
Thanks again, thank you. Thank you.
Excellent.
I guess we can let them all go home now, huh?
Yeah, I think they want to go home, celebrate and relax.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Resolution 2013-310, appointing snow season laborers for the Department of Public Works.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing employment of snow season laborers for the Department of Public Works. These are on an as-needed basis if we get that white fluffy stuff that comes down from the sky anytime soon.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Yes.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mayor Most.
Yes. So excited.
Resolution 2013-311, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the 2013 budget.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special item revenue and appropriation in 2013 budget, known as chapter 159 of the Township of Lacy pursuant to NJSA 48:4-87. This is just in accordance with the budget law, monies that we have received, such as reimbursements from FEMA, which is in the amount of $200,000. We have to officially recognize it by a resolution and send it off to the state for approval to put it in the budget, and this will go down, this will be payment on the note where we borrowed a million dollars to help offset the storm.
And that's to pay off the bond, right?
Yes, a special emergency note.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Most.
Yes. Resolution 2013-312, authorizing the transfer of credit balances.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to transfer credit balances from 2013 to 14. These are credit balances on six various tax accounts that are being transferred into a future quarter.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Yes.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mayor Most.
Yes. Resolution 2013-313, canceling certain tax debit and credit balance under $10.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, canceling certain tax and debit credit balances under $10. This is a housekeeping item by the tax collector's office. There's approximately 30 properties that we're doing that with.
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Most.
Yes. Resolution 2013-314, canceling taxes on property acquired by the township.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel taxes due for properties acquired by the township. There's block 1,002.01, lot 1.01, block 1761.01, lot 5, block 2,407, lot 22, block 2,428, lot 5, and block 1422, lot 32.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Most.
Yes. Resolution 2013-315, authorizing the refund of a building permit fee.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing refund of building permit fee issued by the Lacy Township Building Department. This is a refund for the customer canceled the contract, and the refund is $284.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mr. Delacruz?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Most.
Yes. Resolution 2013-316, authorizing the refund of deposits held for municipal facilities.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Sharkey?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
Yes.
Mayor Most.
Yes. Resolution 2013-317, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Bush State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $4,730,273.81.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Sharkey?
I vote yes, I vote no. This is my last no vote, I think, on 1304849, that is a payment to Mr. Gilmore's office for rail trail matters, and I abstain on S2581, a payment to Shoprite, my employer, for supplies for municipal lines.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mrs. Delacruz?
I vote yes, except for the rail trail matters.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
And Mayor Most.
Yes. Monthly reports?
For the month of November, road opening permits were issued in the amount of $6,480. Recycling collection was in the amount of $1,645.90. Municipal court for the month of October collected receipts in the amount of $35,119.57. Municipal clerk's office for the month of November collected receipts in the amount of $4,505.22, and the tax collector's office for the month of November collected receipts in the amount of $12,468,663. Motion to accept the reports is read. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Motion to approve, caucus meeting minutes of November twenty-six, twenty thirteen. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Abstain.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes in November twenty-six, twenty thirteen. Motion?
Move it.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle license applications for the Ocean County Shrine Ladies Club, Lacey Township High School, PTA, the Women's Club of Lacey and the Lacey Elks at twenty-five eighteen. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Comments from the committee, Mr. Dykoff?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to congratulate the employees of the Public Works Department. As we just said, it helps the department run smoothly when people are rewarded for the work that they do. And as was mentioned, these individuals were working out of title. And those of you who know about union ways and working out of title, you can't do it. They've got to be titled and paid for the work they do. So it's bringing everything into order and hopefully, as I said, we've turned the corner. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy holiday, whatever religion, whatever holiday you follow. God bless you and more power to you. Have a safe one and a Happy New Year. As this is the last meeting of the year, we will have some changes come next year. I want to thank Mayor Most for his time this year. Having sat as mayor, it's difficult. It's a lot, very time consuming. You are the face of the township very often. People should be reminded, we're here to back him up and here to back up the mayor and he represents us. And he did a great job and I'm sure he's looking forward to a little rest and relaxation for next year. The other two changes obviously will be that Mr. Sharkey and Mrs. Dela Cruz will not be here next year. And gotten to know them very well, this is the second time that I've served with Mrs. Dela Cruz. And the first time that I've served with Mr. Sharkey, it, it, with a little cruelty and, and pleasure that I, I served with Mr. Sharkey because I, I, for ten years, saw him come up here and he was on the other side of the dais and I like to say, well, it's a little different over there. And I, I had a conversation with him a little while ago in the back room about the experience that you gain sitting here. And the experience you don't realize because all of a sudden, you, you can talk intelligently about certain things or intelligently might be a stretch, but you can, you can, you can talk about certain things and sound intelligent as they pertain to public employment. Because it's certainly different, just like, you know, he and I all came from private employment, private sector. Now we're in the public sector in this aspect and you learn certain things and it's pretty interesting. But like I said, what you see on that side and what your reality is on this side are two different things. But I certainly enjoyed serving with Mr. Sharkey. We worked together well. I think this, this five-member committee this year worked very well together. Mrs. Dela Cruz, I really enjoyed working with Mrs. Dela Cruz. I liked sitting next to her this year, it was a lot of fun. She was prepared. And I said it last time when Mrs. Dela Cruz transitioned from the township committee to not the township committee. And I made a comment, I said, she was our heart. She kind of kept us grounded. It's nice to have a woman and a woman's point of view. And that's what Helen brought and I count her as a friend and I know she's a, she's a very great lady and I wish her the best in her future endeavors.
You too.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thanks for the kind words from Mr. Dykoff. Mrs. Dela Cruz?
This being the last meeting I'm attending in my term as a committee woman, I thank my Lord and I thank all the people of Lacey for the privilege of having served you as committee woman. And I want to express my gratitude and appreciation to my fellow committee men and, and I want to start with Mayor Most and Committee, Committee Man Dykoff, Committee Man Quinn, Committee Man Sharkey. It was great working with all of you. There were times when we disagreed, there were occasions when we strongly disagreed. But above all and most of all, we are all working towards the betterment of Lacey. Our administrator, Ms. Lorraine Veronica, thank you for all your help. You always showed your professionalism, your kindness and patience. And I thank you for all the help you helped give for me. And I wish you the best always. And our township attorney, Lawrence Stager, never in a moment, working with our attorney, that I felt being treated differently because of my party, being party. And thank you for, you always were accommodating and took time to explain whatever is the problem that I said before you to explain. And I thank you for your help all these years and I wish you the best always and your family. You know, all of my co-personal here in the dais, I don't like them, I love them. And I wish all of them the best and their families. And also for the department heads, I don't, you know, I, I really felt bad that I voted, no, but you know where I was coming from. And I love you all and I thank you and all the members of your departments. You have always shown, shown courtesy and dedication and everything functions well in our township because of the job that you do. You truly make this place a good place to live. Thank you for all the volunteers, those in the emergency EMS and all in the fire department. Thank you to all of them. And they were always so selfless in their giving for their service to our township. When you say volunteers, we always think first of the fire department personnel and EMS. But let's not forget the volunteers in our boards and commissions in town. And I want to express my gratitude and appreciation for working well with those that I was liaison with, the Board of Health, Mrs. Deborah Slota being the chair lady, seniors advisory board with Mrs. Jensen as the chair lady, and economic development commission with Christopher Dusty, the chairman. It was great working with you all and I appreciate all the hard work that you do for our township. When I say all these things about the officials of our town, I want to let you know, my friends out there, that the all, the important people in our town is not really us, it's you out there whom we serve. And I wish you all the best. For my friends in the Democrat Party, thank you for your love and support. I will always treasure your friendship and I hope that you keep on keeping, let's, let's keep on keeping on with our belief in a two-party system. I always believed that a government with a two-party system is always a healthier and better government. So I wish you the best always and I'll be there for you and with you. And then, of course, lastly, but not least, and of course, the most special is, I want to thank my family. People have asked me, so what are you doing, what are you going to do now, Helen? Well, first, I'm going to, now that I have more time, I want to enjoy the love, the closeness, the warmth of my family. Thank you for my husband, Dr. Dela Cruz, my darling children, Eric and Gina, and of course, my son-in-law, Mark, and our grandchildren, Madison, Nathan, and Gavin. Thank you for all your support and your undying love and, and of course, thank you also for doing more than your share of the housework while I was committee woman. So for everyone, I want to thank and I wish you all in this Christmas, the blessings of love, joy, and peace. God bless you all, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dela Cruz. Mr. Sharkey?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to start off, I'd like Mr. Dykoff and congratulate the DPW. They do a lot of hard work and it's good to see them move up to the positions they belong. I'm going to mention something that happened yesterday. It's not a secret because it was on multiple news channels and of course, sometimes it always seems that Lacey never gets on the news except for something negative, but I think this is actually kind of a positive thing in a way. And that was Yosha County Prosecutor's Office bringing police dogs into the school to try to sniff out drugs, no pun intended. Some of you may know that I have actually been working on trying to get a police dog and possibly a canine unit in this town for about two or three years now. And while this year was something that we probably could, really couldn't do, it is my hope that in the near future, this town will get one, once its needs are met in the department for staffing. So I hope that's something that we can see in the very near future. And I see that bringing in a canine unit or an animal at least, one, will I think, help the department get a real grip on the drug problem that's plaguing this town. And I get it, we're not the only town, but I'm not a committeeman in any other town, I'm a committeeman here. So I really care about how this town moves forward and I'm hoping we're going to go in the right direction. And I know we will. So I guess I have a lot of people to thank. Where has the time gone? It's been three years, I've learned quite a bit. First, I have to thank the department heads because when I got here, I didn't really know much about any of the particular departments, other than the police department maybe. But speaking into whether it's police chiefs or Jim Wyland, speaking to Adrian or Veronica, everyone's made sure to help me understand their departments better so that I have a better understanding when I speak to the people about it. Like Mrs. Dela Cruz, I also want to thank the volunteers. They do one heck of a job keeping this town safe. I personally want to thank Veronica because when I got here, I didn't really know much about the inner workings of township government. I knew the ideas I had, I knew what I wanted to do. But Veronica sat me down usually weekly for quite a while to help me keep abreast of all the situations and to make sure that I was fully understanding and fully involved in what was going on. To Lauren and Miss Stiger, it's always valuable to have an attorney on hand, legal advice he's offered us over the years. And like Mrs. Dela Cruz, I never felt alienated just because I'm in a different political party than Mr. Gilmore's office. I have to thank my colleagues up here. I've known all these folks here longer than I've actually been sitting here. And I guess I consider you guys more friends than colleagues. Yes, we disagree. And sometimes I feel that maybe your party's a little misguided, but that's my opinion. But I think I see here, what I see on this dais, is something that I think the rest of this country can learn from and that's called civility. Washington is deeply divided. Today, I think we finally have a long-term budget for the first time in how many years? We've passed three bipartisan budgets here. We all didn't get everything we wanted, but that's how government should function. We did it without screaming at each other, without shutting the town down because we disagreed with what our colleagues felt. We did it because we work together and in doing so, we make Lacey Township a better place. I'm very happy that we were able to do that. I, of course, have to thank my family and my friends for standing with me and helping me get where I am. And finally, I have to thank the people. The people put me here. Many of you stood by me for these three years and I have to thank you very much for that. So what have I learned in three years? Well, something me and Mr. Most have talked about is government is slow. Takes a long time to get anything done. Like I said, I've been working for a few years now on trying to getting a police dog and that's, of course, something that will not be finished until after I'm gone. Many different people have many different ideas of how things should be done. And for anybody who comes into the seat in the future, they need to understand that. And of course, I knew that, I knew that going in. But everyone who runs for office needs to understand that you're going to get a thousand different viewpoints, but in the end, it's yours that's going to make the difference. You're the one sitting up here and you're the one that has to make the decisions. Whatever you do, you have to be able to sleep at night. So now it is time for me to go. I'm going to miss it, I really am. And who knows? This is America, maybe I'll come back one day. But I plan on going out and seeing the rest of the world if possible. I'd like to wish good luck to Mr. Curatolo and Mr. Kennison in the future. This is a very tough job and I know they're up to it. And finally, thank you to everyone and a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharkey. Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Mayor.
Soon to be mayor, Quinn.
Just, just to touch on the Public Works employees again, you know, they, they truly do an outstanding job in this community. They, they go above and beyond every day in their job and they certainly are well-deserving. Like Mr. Dykoff said, you know, even though they've, they've been doing a job, you know, by statutes, we have to take and do these things and we've been putting it off and putting it off and telling civil service we're going to do it. So it's, it's nice that we're able to do it this year, it's nice we all agreed on it. You know, these, these men are really getting something, you know, that they, they certainly have earned. So I think everyone here, sitting here, certainly agrees that the parks and recreation and streets and everything in this town is probably superior to just about any town in the Yosha County area. So thank you very much to them. Let me just read some police stats before I make my comments. These are statistics for the period of Friday, November first, two thousand and thirteen through Saturday, November thirty, two thousand and thirteen. The police department handled three thousand, eleven calls for service, three hundred and eighty-two motor vehicle stops resulting in one hundred and eighty-four summonses and ninety-five written warnings. We had sixty-six motor vehicle accidents, one hundred and fifty-nine first aid calls, five DWI arrests, forty-one physical arrests, eight drug arrests, and one charge of distribution of CPS. The police department cops collectible card program is underway and the youth of the community have been collecting the cards. The program has been a great success thus far as it provides a positive interaction between the patrol officers on the street and the youth of Lacey Township. An additional supply of cards has been ordered to keep up with the demand that we had. On Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand and thirteen, Lacey Township Police Department publicly released, publicly released the bank ATM surveillance image of an unidentified person who had illegally used a stolen credit card connected to a burglary of a vehicle in Lenoah Harbor. After a three-week investigation, detectives identified the suspect as thirty-one-year-old Jessica Walters of Lenoah Harbor. On the afternoon of Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand and thirteen, Lacey Township Police Department detectives arrested thirty-one-year-old Jessica Walters. She has been lodged in the Yosha County Correctional Facility on related criminal charges. Another car burglary suspect, not associated with Jessica Walters, is still under investigation and has not yet been charged. Residents are asked to take preventative measures during the holiday shopping season. Please do not leave expensive items visible from the exterior of the vehicle as thieves will damage the vehicles to gain entry if they see a valuable item. It is important to lock vehicles when they are parked in driveways or the street as a vast majority of the thefts are crimes of opportunity based on the ease of quickly looking through an unlocked vehicle during the overnight hours. Unfortunately, it's important to note that a theft from unlocked vehicles is a regular occurrence in all towns and Lacey Township is certainly no exception. The vehicles are not attributable to a single, the offenses are not attributable to a single person or even a specific group of people, so residents are asked to be vigilant and aware to prevent victimization. On Wednesday, December eleventh, as Mr. Sharkey said, the Yosha County Prosecutor's Office conducted a well-coordinated canine sweep of the Lacey Township High School utilizing eight K-19s from six different law enforcement agencies. This operation was conducted at the request of the chief of police and the acting superintendent of schools. The operation itself was coordinated and run by the Yosha County Prosecutor's Office, therefore, all press releases and specifics regarding the operation are only being released by the Yosha County Prosecutor's Office. Chief Pepperata is in the process of initiating a community-based program to assist Lacey Township residents who have a family member who may be at risk of an overdose due to heroin drug addiction. Residents interested in obtaining information regarding the new overdose protection act and the family member's ability to obtain the emergency antidote, medicine, naloxone, can confidentially email the chief through the contact us portion of the department's website. The new law allows family members to obtain a third-party prescription for naloxone to keep within their homes in the event of a loved one overdosing. That item, I know it's been talked about in these meetings over the last year or so, it, it's, it's a drug that will reverse the effects of a heroin overdose if it's given to the individual prior to them expiring. So it's, if you have a family member and you, you are concerned about it, it is very important that you reach out to the police chief and he'll put you in touch with the right people to try and get access to it. It has to be done through a prescription, but it, it is something that can possibly save a loved one's life in your home if you have it available in the home when the overdose actually occurs. We've had overdoses occur where the people, you know, were not aware of it. This is something the Yosha County Prosecutor's is going to be pushing big time next year. And they're also going to be coming out with a program to try and fund this, you know, for people that have these issues that they're dealing with. It's very important. On the other note, with regards to the canine sweep in the high school yesterday, as Mr. Sharkey said, it, it, it's, it's been a long time coming. We've been trying to get not only a canine dog in our own town, but now that we have the ability to take and get into the schools, I have to applaud Acting Superintendent Vanessa Clark and Chief of Police Dave Pepperata for coming together and allowing us to get into those schools because it, it's another tool that we have to try and fight the ongoing drug problem which exists not only in Lacey Township but throughout the entire county. Yesterday, it was keyed in on Lacey Township. Last week, they were in the Tom River Schools and they're going to be going around sweeping schools throughout the entire county. But I think, like Sean said, if we can, at some point in the future, if it's cost-effective and it's working for our town, get our own canine unit here, it would certainly go a long way, not only with the drug problem, with other issues that police want to take and deal with. So I have to, you know, send special thanks over to the schools to Mrs. Clark, you know, for, for making it possible for us to finally get into a school. So, uh, let's see. Just a couple of comments. I also want to, you know, congratulate Dave, you know, Dave Most and thank Dave for his service this year. Dave is probably the most involved mayor out of any of us that have been sat in that chair as mayor. He, he puts his heart and soul into everything and anything that he gets involved in. I was at a dinner last night and one of the young ladies that was sitting at the table happened to be from the American Cancer Society. And she was asking about Dave and the first thing she brought up was Dave sitting on a perch in front of a home depot for three days in the rain. And I, you know, I was, I was kind enough to volunteer you again for an upcoming fundraiser that they're going to be having, which I'm not going to tell you what it's all about tonight. But, you know, he, he really, really does everything and anything for anybody that he can help out. He's done a great job representing us, you know, he's, he's put a lot of time in. And again, it takes a lot of time away from your personal life, your business life, and your family life. So, you know, Dave, you know, I congratulate you and I truly thank you for everything you've done this year.
Thank you.
Sean and Helen, this is a tough one because I, I've served with Helen before and, and Helen is an absolute sweet, you know, person. She, she truly is very, very passionate about what she, she believes in and what she does. It's funny because you made a comment about how, you know, we all disagree, there's no doubt about it. We've disagreed over the years, whether it be the five of us sitting up here or committees prior to this, that, you know, we've served on, there's always disagreement, but you have to work it out. You have to negotiate with each other, you have to come to an agreement, keeping in mind that we're all up here representing the taxpayers of Lacey Township. And Helen never loses sight of that. You know, the only thing I have to tell you, Helen, is the comment that you made was sometimes screaming at each other. I know that was with Dave and Mark, but, you know, you and I never really had that. She, you know, I'm going to miss her, she's, she's a great lady. And she, she really truly, you know, puts the, the heart into representing the people of Lacey Township. You couldn't ask for, for a better, better individual to sit up here. You know, it, it's something, I know you, you're going to have a lot more time available, I know that because I know the time you're involved. Some nights, you, you'd sit at the kitchen table with the kids and I know you don't want to come out like the rest of us, but you, you're always here. And you, you certainly have been a tremendous asset to the community and, and
Thank you, Mr.
To the five of us sitting, or the other four of us sitting up here and the ladies, thank you very much for your service.
Oh, thank you too, thank you.
We will miss you.
I'll miss you too.
Sean, I, I've known Sean a lot of years, I know Helen a lot of years too when she had the story years ago, in different, different ways. But it's funny because when I'm, I was coming here tonight, I'm thinking to myself, wow, Sean, Sean's leaving the committee tonight, I think it was thirteen or fourteen years ago when I was president of the school board, Sean was actually the president of the student body at the high school at that point in time. And you, you could see looking at Sean that he was going to get involved. He was going to, he had such a flair for getting involved in the community. History, he's such a history buff, I, I, I know. He's, he's going to be, you know, he's teaching now, but he's going to go down as one of the greatest history teachers that I know. So I certainly, you know, when he says travel the world, he's going out there to travel the world and learn about history. You know, he's not like me heading to a beach somewhere. He's going out there to educate himself and to make it a situation where he has more to give to people in his classroom. And that's truly something that's very important. You know, we kid around sitting over here, you know, I've enjoyed sitting on this side. I've enjoyed sitting on that side with both Helen and Sean. And we, you know, we kid around about the different things and we don't agree on everything. But at the end of the day, you know, we always, you know, taken to deal with the issue. We come to an agreement on the issue. And when it's over, I always tell them, you know, it's over. Forget about it. Move on to the next issue. You can't carry things with you because if you let things get under your skin and bother you, it's gonna eat you alive. And this is, you know, like other people sat up here tonight, this is a job where you're never gonna make everybody happy, but you have to do what you believe in your heart is the best thing for the majority of people in this town. Sometimes, you know, people will have something to say. It's part of the job. It comes with the job. People are gonna criticize you. There's no doubt about it. But, you know, it's a situation where your life becomes an open book. And it changes a lot of things. It puts a lot of stress on your family and it puts a lot of stress on you as a committeeman. But Sean has handled it extremely, extremely well. He's gone through, you know, family tragedy over the last year and he's dealt with that, but he's never missed a beat. And I have certainly enjoyed, you know, the time we spent together, the time we served back in the schools and the time we served here. And I can truly tell you that I know you're not coming back for a number of years. I won't be here when you get back. But I wish you the best, Sean, because you're truly a great individual. This town was very fortunate to have you, so I wish you the best. On that, I just wish everyone a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and, you know, have a safe and happy holiday and, you know, we'll see you after the first of the year. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn? I have a few people to thank. The Christmas parade, the Elks, the Exalted Ruler Lou Zigorelli and Rich Bard. They do a wonderful job every year and it was very well attended, wouldn't you say?
It was great.
The weather was great and we walked the parade route and we gave out a lot of candy and there was a lot of spectators and it was a wonderful day. And the Elks, they do wonderful work in our community and I wanna thank them for all their all their cooperation and helping out everybody in our community as well. Moving on, we had the VP our last township meeting, Gary Stathis, come to our township meeting to give us an update on the plant. And I just wanna let everybody know that they pay sixty-five million dollars a year in salaries. That's a lot of money. And a hundred million dollars in salaries in an outage year. And that's why it's so important when that plant closes in twenty nineteen to come up with a transition plan. We're still working on it. Like Mr. Sharkey alluded to, they said government's slow. And I agree with you. It just takes time and you just have to stay on it. And that's what we're doing and we're moving forward. But, you know, that place is a real asset to us, not only from the generation part of it, but, you know, it's it really bolsters the county, the state, and it's important to think about the future. And that's what this committee should be doing and is doing and in the future as well. And, you know, we talked about the dredging projects and the lake projects and we're addressing those issues. It doesn't happen in a snapshot. It takes time, but, you know, I'm very proud of what this committee's done in the past. Energy aggregation is coming up. In January, we're going out to bid. And hopefully February, if the price is right, we'll award it. And as far as your bills and hopefully we can save you some money there with your electric bills. I'd like to thank Helen and Sean. It was great working with you.
Thank you.
You know, it's a process like Mr. Dykoff had advocated that you learn a lot in this position and working with you was a real pleasure.
Same here.
And, you know, it was tough when it comes to bonding issues and, you know, park issues and, you know, trying to get things. But I'm very proud of what we've done and you should be very proud of what you've done as well. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And I'd like to thank all our managers. Veronica, our attorney, and our managers in this township. They are on the top of their game and I'm so proud that we have such an elite group. And they're very highly qualified and they carry a lot of certifications as well. And I think we would all agree that we have a great team in this township. And with Casey and all the workers and all the different department heads, I can't thank them enough as mayor because I know the level of dedication they've given to this town and will continue to give to this town. And with that said, I'd like to thank all the volunteer organizations we have in this town because they're really our life's blood. And, you know, I'm gonna miss some of them, but the Food Bank comes to mind, our Municipal Alliance. I see Mr. Vicaro is back there in the audience and he's a member. And we've made some really wonderful headway in the last year, but it's been a fight, you know. It's been taking, it's taken years and years and finally we start to see some results. And I appreciate the schools buying into the program as well. And I'd like to thank the Prosecutor's Office as well for getting involved in our town and all our church leadership, our Chief of Police, our Police Department. Like I said, it's just a wonderful town. And it was said before, what makes this town great is all those volunteer organizations we have in this town. I think if you compare ourselves to other towns, you know, Lacy Township definitely is on top when it comes to community because we truly care about each other. We're family and it's just a pleasure. And as mayor, I gotta tell you, it was truly a privilege. This is my second time being mayor and from the first time being mayor, I've learned so much. For my second term being mayor and it's really, it's a learning experience. Being patient with people and understanding that, hey, it's not about you. It's about the people. And as far as recognition, you don't get recognized in this position and you don't need to get recognized in this position. You do it for the community and that's what you do it for. And I believe that in the future, this committee's gonna work well and with great leadership. And like I said, I can, I'd like to thank my family as well because they sacrificed. My wife and my daughters and my grandchild. And I'm really looking forward to spending more time with them because like this committee had said, that you spend a lot of time out in the community and, you know, that's not a bad thing because, you know, shaking hands and doing what you have to do as mayor is just a wonderful experience. And it just fills your heart when you're able to give back to the community and you get it back fourfold. And it's just a wonderful place to live. And I wanna thank Lacy Township for embracing our whole committee and making this town the township. Everybody should be very proud of it, so. Thanks again and Merry Christmas to everybody. And I wish everybody a happy holiday and hope everybody's safe. And with that said, I'd like to open up the comments to the public. Seeing no pop, oh, we have a hand, two hands.
Just I would've thought you were mad at these guys being standing up.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
Name and address, please?
Gary Vicaro, one sixteen Heatherington Court. John I speaking for the Lacy Democratic Club as well as President of Lacy. We wanna thank Helen and Sean for all your great work over the last three years. We're very proud of you. You should be very proud of what you've accomplished.
Thank you.
And one of the things I think anybody sitting up, they can learn from Helen and Sean is, you know, we haven't always agreed, even within the party sometimes speaking Helen and Sean, but the employees will wanna come listen to us. And we can disagree and still get along. We're very proud of you and hope to keep seeing you come in the club any time you want. My only point is I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment? Name and address, please?
John Cohn, one thousand five Center Street. I still want to thank Sean and Helen for their three years of service. I wanna thank Mayor Mose for his year of service and apparently congratulate soon to be Mayor Quinn from Mr. Mayor Mose's offhand comment. I actually wanted to ask, has there been any thought from the Township Committee about creating a larger social media face? While you, while Committeeman Quinn was speaking on the Overdose Protection Act, Chief Pepperata had put it on Facebook already.
Right, right.
So I was wondering if maybe in the future we could create maybe a Facebook page for the town run by Veronica or her great workers in town. Veronica loves it. I'm giving her more work. Just so that with the growing social media age, the town could be greater aware of things that are happening in town, like the parade, like the great Morde parade that the town puts on.
So you're saying we should get one of the younger girls in Veronica's office to
Yeah, because I'm elder now.
I think it's a great idea to get the message out there. I mean, the website is one thing, but everybody works with their smartphones now, so it's a good idea. We'll revisit it in January.
You know, it's a nice point you make too because if you haven't noticed through the years, we've lost our reporters. We don't have that communication anymore and you don't really see that going out in the newspapers anymore, you know. You remember the beacon with Bob Vosler and, you know, even the patch doesn't show up. A lot of their information they get from the Police Department, but, you know, it's tough to get that information. The only communication tool we have now is through the cameras. So you bring up a good point.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom, for all your work and all your, your crew there as well. So I wanna wish all the students there a great holiday as well and appreciate you coming out.
Happy holidays, guys.
Thank you. Regina? How are ya? Name and address.
Just very chilly in here. Regina descends the sunset dry Sunrise Beach. Well, I'm freezing in the back anyway.
Comfortable.
Heat rises. Maybe behind there it's a little warmer. I don't know.
As you can tell, there's so much love going on here with the ocean. Everybody's nice and warm, so.
Anyway, I'd like to make a formal request tonight for additional police presence in the vicinity of the three hundred block of Sunrise Boulevard in Sunrise Beach due to the findings of a recent search warrant that was executed at three oh eight on December second. There are children near this vicinity and it is a school bus stop. At least three or four buses come by this exact vicinity every day. I'm making this request for all the nearby residents and for the safety of the children. We need more police presence on Sunrise Boulevard without a doubt until this situation is remedied. Everybody does not keep forty-eight bags of heroin in their house. And this was a bonus when the cops went in there to buy stolen property. Okay? This is less than a thousand feet from my house and I'm not going to forget about it.
Would you say it was three oh eight Sunrise?
I believe so, yes.
Yes.
And you know, we've had this conversation, you and I, and what we've done about it and we're moving forward.
Well, I wanted to make an absolute formal public request because you said Mr. Quinn is the liaison to the Police Department. And even though I did speak to the Bella already, you know, I want to see the cops. I want to see them. And I don't just mean Mr. Simpson waving hi, but he's retired now, I think, so we need police presence on the Boulevard until this situation is remedied.
And we talked to the landlord as well, the owner, and we're working on it.
Yeah, and hopefully we'll have some progress. And then we spoke a little bit about the drug sweep at the high school yesterday. I was very glad to hear that. And we're waiting for the police report on the outcome of that. And as you said, there's a lack of news communication in this community. It's no secret and it's over a year now. We have no more reporters. We have very little communication with Lacy Patch if anything because instead of an editor for each town now, there's like one editor for five towns. And this guy's out on LBI and he's just not coming up here unless it's a special occasion. And I've only seen him actually twice, I think, in the last five months.
Sad, isn't it?
It's very sad and as you said, there's no more specific Lacy Beacon. It is just the Beacon now and it covers all of Southern Ocean County. You don't know who's reading what when, but there is a way to come at it a little bit. If you have any access to email, anyone with email, go to the police website and sign up for the weekly police report because you never know when it's gonna be the house next door. And I'll tell you, the addresses are just creeping closer and closer and closer to my house. And now it's down the street. It's just too scary. And these kids, they gotta walk past that house every day and you never know what they might be walking into. And I'm trying to divert them up the next block, but they won't listen to me. I don't want them to walk past that house, but it's a longer walk if they have to come around the next corner. Now, a month back or a while ago, there used to be, you know, bills for each meeting on a bulletin board out in the home.
It's probably something that I just forgot to do. I apologize.
Because last month, last meeting, I went to look for them. I wanted to reference something and it wasn't there. So I was just wondering if you were still doing it.
It's definitely something, I mean, we have a list through the finance office. I know Mr. Moss goes over there and reviews that all the time. So it is because, you know, that list changes up until tonight.
Right, but while you're in the executive session, it's easy for us to, well, they just click, 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 do it, see what we wanna see. So I was missing that. Um, I had put in a request last week and I got a phone call that it was emailed to me and I never saw the email. So I don't know if my name was spelled incorrectly, but wouldn't it have bounced back if you weren't able to transmit it to me?
No.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't come back?
No, I don't, I don't know. I mean, you got the call from
I got a call from Lisa two days ago saying that she emailed it to me.
Okay. Yeah, but if she didn't bounce, if it didn't bounce back, I don't know.
I didn't see it. It did not come through, so I don't know what happened with that. But I have to come in and review something else, so maybe document would be available anyway. But I just wanted to let you know I didn't get that. And thank you very much to Sean and Helen for your turn of service to this township. It's a very time-demanding job and it certainly doesn't pay more than the minimum wage in the long run. Thank you very much for your service and happy holidays to everyone and see you January first.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Moss?
Hello, Moss. This is King Drive, Port River Beach.
Good evening.
Good evening. I just wanna look, I know I'm gonna give, on the total bills for this month were four million seven hundred thirty thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars. Remind the citizens that we're sending three million four hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred twenty-two to our school system. The rest of it is township bills and some of it is bills that have, we actually get back, it's not really a bill, it comes out, comes back to us. Refunds and stuff like that shows up on the bills also. Also remind taxpayers, if I may, not to forget that we pay sixty-three percent of our taxes to the school system. We pay twenty-two percent to the county and fifteen percent to township. Now, the twenty-two percent to the county, county itself, it's eighteen percent. They've got their little tricks in here for the library tax, health tax, open space tax. That's how they get up there at twenty-two percent because that's who you send it to. I'd like to compliment the township about tonight on our meeting. We won't see this until about three weeks from now. And last month's meeting, the last meeting of the month, has not been put onto the school website yet. And yet today, we're sending the schools fifteen thousand dollars on the bills for this privilege. And see, it'd be taking us a long time to get our meetings onto the website for people to see. I have no idea yet what went on at the last meeting, which I miss, and I'm still waiting for it.
Well, like we just discussed, it's so important because we've lost that communication tool with the reporters. So I'll talk to a fellow I know that works for the school system, runs the
I'm just saying, you know, I like to see what happened last time.
I'm sure Tom could be more proactive.
I know there's something, it'll be going here and there. There's some, there's a time lapse between what they do here and get it to the school. But the school board meeting is on a Monday night and I can sit at home Tuesday night watching on TV. I gotta wait three weeks, four weeks, five weeks before I see our council meeting, before I
I appreciate you bringing that up. I'm sure Tom will help us out with that. Right, Tom?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
It's okay. Any further public comment?
Yes, may I?
Well, let me close the floor. Seeing no other public comment, motion to close the floor?
Move it.
Second? All in favor? Stella Cruz?
Thank you very much to our municipal chair, Gary Vicaro. Our county, our municipal chair, municipal president of the Democratic Club, Gary Vicaro. Municipal Chair, John Cohn. And also here is Jean Kelly, who's also at one point the municipal chair. And thank you Regina and Jay Cohn. Mary Bender was here a while ago and he left. Too bad that he left because I wanted him to hear that in spite of everything else, I want to thank him for his hard work to help Sean and myself get elected. And I will never forget that and I appreciate it. And to him and his family, I also wish love, peace, and joy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stella Cruz. Any further comment from the committee?
I think Sean or Helen would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second? All in favor? Have a good night. Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you for coming out.